Danny, okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started here in about 30 seconds. So if everyone can take their seats, that would be great. We'll give Pasadena media time to queue up. And council members, if you can take your seats. Is James Aragon with PCC here? James Aragon, trustee for PCC, are you here? You are not here yet, okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am calling, in one second, when I get myself in order here, the October 15th meeting of the Altadena County Town Council to order. We love doing that in honor of immediate past Chair Veronica Jones. The time is 7:06. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we've invited Altadena resident Carrie Eastman to lead our pledge of allegiance. Carrie works at Biscuit Film Works in Hollywood and volunteers with Kitty Bungalow Charm School for Wayward Cats. Her hobbies include designing with plants and flowers. Carrie is also a breast cancer survivor. Please help me welcome Carrie Eastman.
Thank you. Please rise. Three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And don't go too far. Reggie has something for you. Give her, there you go, a little parting gift. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can drink a beer with them.
And thank you so much for being here. Okay, we are moving on to roll call. Recording Secretary Pat Sutherland.
Thank you. All right, let's start with Connor Chipola.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Nick Aronson's absent, excused. Kim Yu.
Present.
Melissa Marona.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Present.
John Carmody.
Present.
Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Isis Moulton.
Present.
Is here. Japhina Hall.
Present.
Vice Stuart Gordon.
Present.
Pat Sutherland's here. Regina Wilkins.
Present.
Doug Cauliflower.
Excused.
Okay. Oops. Diane Markison.
Here.
And Sylvia Vega.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Great. Okay, we are going to approve the October 15th meeting agenda for everyone here. There are agendas in the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out the card and give it to a councilperson on either end of the tables. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones and other noise-making devices. As the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please make sure to include your contact information. Public comments are limited to two minutes. These guidelines are in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Council members, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Monday, October 7th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. That agenda was circulated to you on Thursday, October 10th. I have one change. Please, under Community Reports, add item 4.4. It'll be a legislative and event update by District Representative for State, Senator Portantino, Lisa Brault. And that's B-R-A-U-L-T, Pat, for your records. So that will be 4.4. Are there any other changes?
Madam Chair, I move that we strike item 6.6.
Moving to strike item 6.6 bylaws, great. We will hold that over. Any other changes?
It's not a change, it's a small addition because on item 641, the candidate statements, I neglected when we put it together that everybody gets to vote on, excepting the... So we need to just make it a vote.
Okay, so it should actually be 6.7.1. We have it as 6.4.1. And we have an action item underneath that? Or is it next, is it part of that?
No, it's part of 6.4.1.
6.2. 6.7.1, it's the wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we just got the wrong number.
Now I see that.
Okay, so that's an action item.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you so much. All right. Any other changes? I move that the agenda be approved as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any abstentions? What's the weather word? No, I know it's some move. I always want to say disapproval, but it's not disapproval. Objections? Oh my God, that's the word. Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously. All right, we are moving on. The first, or the next thing up is the Chair report. I want to acknowledge that October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In 2024, according to the National Breast Cancer Foundation, more than 360,000 people will be diagnosed with breast cancer. Please take a moment to call to mind anyone you know who is or has battled this disease. And I ask those assembled here to observe a moment of silence to lift them up in healing thought. Thank you so much for that. Vice Chair Aronson would be up next. He's not in attendance tonight, but two weeks ago, he hosted a group of Avison Elementary students here at the community center. We have some of those students here to explain how they are covering his absence. Please welcome West, Sophia, and Hiroto. Reggie. Reggie, will you move the thing down? The mic.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Burke, and I am in 6th grade at Avison Independent Study Academy. On the 3rd of October, we came here to the center on a field trip and learned the basics of how government works and how it affects us as citizens here in Altadena. We then conducted a mock election between Cow and Wolf, the latter being the winning candidate. In order to fill the seat of Vice Chair Nick Aronson at tonight's meeting, a student spoke for each candidate. I spoke for Wolf. Another student led the election, taking questions from the students and parents in the audience. The candidates then answered these questions and spoke about how they would improve Altadena and what they have already done to do so. We then held a poll where the audience was able to vote on the candidate that they thought would do more for Altadena, which West Locke will elaborate on now.
Hello, my name is West Locke. I also went on the field trip which Sophia told you about. I will elaborate on the mock election we performed. After each candidate's representative had answered enough questions about how they would improve Altadena if elected, it was time to conduct a vote. A few of my classmates were put in charge of managing the voting station and counting votes. Wolf won with 17 votes. Unfortunately, there were only three people who supported Cow, mostly to Cow's having a much more aggressive position than Wolf. So we invite Wolf to replace Nick Aronson today. Overall, the experience captured the nuance and detail of government structure and elections even better than I thought would. I learned a lot and enjoyed the experience very much. On behalf of my classmates, thank you for letting us visit.
Thank you. Let's see if Wolf does as good a job keeping me on track as the Vice Chair would. Touche. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. We wanted to also let the Education Committee know that we would like to reach out to some of our other elementary schools and middle schools to see if they would like to come and do a tour of the community center so they can learn a little more about local governance. Okay, we are moving on to our Recording Secretary report. Councilmember Sutherland.
And I get to follow the latest election, yes, okay. Councilmembers, you have copies of the minutes from the September 17th meeting. And I received no information that you had corrections or changes to make. Are there any here that you might have thought of since you received them? Seeing none, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining that wasn't here last month?
Should be two.
Okay, Reggie and... Oh, and John, great, we've got two abstentions. Anybody opposed? All right.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Thank you so much, Pat. Our Treasurer's report, Councilmember O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. I can get used to this. This is good. He doesn't talk, he doesn't talk as much.
Or talk back.
Or talk back, yeah. Sorry, sorry, Nick. I love you, I do. But, I mean, come on, look at him. All right. I'll make it to the bank this month, but we started this month with $1,429.86. I didn't go. We didn't withdraw anything. We ended with $1,429.86. It'll be, it'll be a big deposit soon. I'd like to remind everybody watching and everybody in the audience that the Town Council is a volunteer organization that relies entirely on your donations that sit in a drawer in my house. If you could, if you could feel so kind as to donate to the cause, we don't get paid or take any of this money for ourselves. It all goes to trying to help the citizens of Altadena. A dollar, $2, $100, whatever you feel compelled. I have money, hold on. We actually, we actually all pay. You have money too? Okay. We pay to be here. Oh, you got money too? Okay. Anybody?
Yeah, this is no City of Bell, we don't get...
No. City of what?
Exactly.
If this goes around, if you can make sure it goes around, the last person to have it over here, if you could just give it to Councilmember Wilkins here on the end in the hippie shirt, that would be great. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to our corresponding secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Good evening, everyone. The Altadena Town Council has lots of things going on, and we are developing a lovely slideshow that will show all of the activities going on. And again, thanks to ISIS and everyone for getting that organized. Some highlights regarding events. Don't forget, the Altadena Senior Center has a lot going on. So check them out, they have a calendar. And we will have a link on the website. We also got a request to save the date, Saturday, March 15th, 2025, for the Pasadena Unified School District Science Fest at John Muir High School. Save the date, and they may also still be getting some booths going. So check it out, lots of fun. October 17th is California Shakeout. Will we be hearing that from Deb? So you'll, on, I think it's 10/17. On October 17th, this is your opportunity to practice what you would be doing in an earthquake. So check out California Shakeout. And if you just Google that, there's lots of shakeout activities going on. And then the Altadena Bicycle Club for Halloween will be hosting the Spooky Spokes Costume Halloween Ride for Families. It's a free community night ride hosted and organized by our lovely neighbors, and it's family-friendly. And it'll be starting at the Altadena Farmers Market Friday night, where LA County Parks will also be doing some amazing Halloween-themed activities. So bring your bikes and ride. And speaking of bikes, the 2024 Bicycle Friendly Community Public Survey, Altadena was selected as part of the Altadena Bicycle Club to be assessed for a bicycle-friendly community survey. So I will also post that on the Town Council website, or you can find them in Google, altedinabicycleclub.org. And it'll be a nice assessment nationwide. I think there are eight cities and towns across the state of California selected this year. So this is your opportunity to talk about that. And I think that's it for now. Oh, also, we did get a notice from LA County regarding oak tree ordinance and also concerns of bark beetle infestation. So I did post a link on the website regarding that. And it's called the Gold Spotted Oak Borer has been cited and can decimate oak trees. So check that out and also sign up to give feedback on the oak tree ordinance at LA County Planning. That's it.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we are moving right along. We're going to invite up the, our public safety partners. First, we have Altadena Sheriff's Station Captain Williams.
Walking up, I just got a little nervous. I'm trying to figure out why. I think it's that wolf. Way more intimidating than Nick, so, you know. Moving right along, so. Good evening, thanks for having me here. Couple of crime stats I'd like to start off with. Our aggravated assaults, our violent crimes are down 24%. They've been trending down for the past few months now, so that's a good thing. On to our property crimes, robberies are up 23%. However, our detectives have been making very good arrests regarding our armed robberies. They just caught some suspects that were suspected of robbing a liquor store right here in the area. So that, our detectives are working very hard to solve some of these crimes. Our burglaries are trending down. They are down 40%. However, that's 40% from the beginning of the year. So the number of burglaries are still what I think is a bit high compared to what they can be. But that we're trending down shows that I believe the Neighborhood Watch groups in the neighborhoods are teaming together to help protect the property. So I want to encourage the Neighborhood Watch groups to continue to do what they do. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Our grand thefts are down 32%. That's all other thefts. However, our GTAs, that's Grand Theft Autos, stealing of cars, it's still at, it remains the same as it was last week, last month, excuse me. We're finding out that the primary car that people are trying to steal lately are Infinitis. They believe it has something to do with the programs that they have or devices that they have to break into those, to open those type of vehicles. So those with Infinitis just be on the lookout. I went to a Neighborhood Watch group meeting last week and mentioned that the best device that we have that seems to be helping deter auto thefts are the club. A lot of people don't like using them because they are kind of old, but people that come by to look inside of a vehicle, they see that club is on there and they move on to the next, the next vehicle. They look for the easiest target. We do have a few at the station, not very many now, but if you come by, first come, first served until we run out. Moving on to our detectives, have been doing excellent work at solving crimes. They served a search warrant recently where they were able to make very good arrests. And I want to give an acknowledgement to our detectives who have been working very hard to do that. It's, we have a very good crew now, and they're going to continue the hard work that they do. A few announcements I'd like to make of events we have coming up. The first is our Altadena Neighborhood Watch meeting. Like I mentioned earlier, I went to a CINCH meeting, and they do a very good job of hosting a Neighborhood Watch group. And we're going to have this meeting on the Thursday, October 24th, at 5:00 PM. And that's just, if anyone's interested in starting a Neighborhood Watch group, they're invited to come. I invite people that already have Neighborhood Watch groups to attend, and we'll come up with ideas to help other people start their Neighborhood Watch group. Again, that's Thursday, October 24th, at 5:00 PM in the Altadena Community Center, right here. The next event I have is Saturday, October 26th. Every six months, we do a drug take-back. We're working with the DEA. We're going to have this event in front of the station right here on Fontana Way, where they can come and drop off prescription pills that are unneeded, unwanted. The way we do it is a drive-up, they can just drop it off. We do ask that we will not take, they do not bring, we will not take hypodermic needles. Also, they're saying they will not accept liquid medication. So no liquid medication, no hypodermic needles. And that's going to be Saturday, October 24th, right here in front of the station, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM.
26th.
The 26th, what I say. October 26th, yes. And the last event is the Trunk or Treat. We're working with the park, Farnsworth Park. That's going to be October 31st, that's a Thursday, at 5:00 PM. It's Trunk or Treat. You can come and get some candy. I think I mentioned last time, it's not just the kids. The adults can come get some candy too. So we're going to have candy, music, and a haunted house, Farnsworth Park, October 31st, that's Halloween, at 5:00 PM. And that's all I have, unless there's... One thing I'd like to mention, I guess it's becoming a little tradition of mine. This month makes three years for me here as the captain of Altadena Sheriff's Station. Thank you. And all three years have been a pleasure. I'd like to thank all the community groups and the Town Council for all of their support. It's been a, I've been very fortunate to be assigned here at Altadena, so I hope to be a part of the community in moments to come. So, thank you.
Everyone gasped because they thought you were going to announce that you were leaving. So maybe we don't do that that way next time. Are there any questions for the captain?
I don't have an end time, so it'll probably last for two hours.
Not a question, but we have been fortunate to have you as well.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember O'Malley stole my thunder, but we're very happy to have you. I think I got at least a commitment for another year unless they need you for something bigger elsewhere.
Yeah, I can't control if they decide to have me.
I know. I know. We've, as I've lived here, it seems to be about every three to four years. Anyways, we'll keep you.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll keep you. Any other, no questions? Okay, so we'll see you at the RX Takeback Event and at Farnsworth Park.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention, I didn't hear anything from that wolf, you know.
Just a brief overview where we're at as a department. Our certain numbers are, I think I mentioned there was a lot of short staffing in the past, and we're doing good with our recruitment. Although, if you know anyone, we're still recruiting. We're maximizing our units to be out there in patrol. And in the recent months, there've been a lot of incidents of freeway shooting. And as you guys have seen on the Five and Boyle Heights, the most recent. And this is an issue that we've been dealing with for the last year or so because of, it starts as a road rage incident. And then it escalates to people just chasing each other and then happens to be very unfortunate that someone gets injured or killed. So what we ask the public is, as soon as you see an aggressive driver on the freeway, call it in to 911. At least that would be our lead. Because what we've seen is, as this incidents occur, it has to start with an aggressive driver, just driving recklessly on the freeway. And then another guy, guy or gal, would feel like, man, he's driving recklessly. And then the chase comes, you know. And so that's what we ask the public, just call it in, even just a license plate. And that's that. Another thing is wrong-way drivers. We've been seeing a lot of wrong-way drivers. And again, 90% of them are under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So just be careful out there at night. A lot, what we've seen is the DUI drivers think that the HOV in the number-one lane are the slow lanes. That's what we've seen. So just be careful out there. We're asking the public, whatever you see, call it in. And it's really great to have a partnership. Thank you for your time and the continued partnership, collaboration. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you too. And I appreciate you responding to my email. And I do want to say before you go, that your officers are extremely responsive to this council. We appreciate that. There is, there are a lot of people on this council and in this room who are very concerned about the safety of not only the residents in Altadena, but our children who are in school here. We have so many schools and given the topography here, not all of them have sidewalks, there's not always crosswalks. And the principals are working very hard to correct behavior that some parents use when dropping their children off, that puts other children in harm's way. So we appreciate especially the drive-bys. I was telling Officer Bay that I was on my way to drop my own son at school and I saw, I thought it was him, but he was on vacation, but I saw a motorcycle officer heading eastbound on Woodbury and not five minutes later, I got a text from the principal at Elliott letting me know that they had done a couple of drive-bys. And it just, the presence just calms everybody down for reasons we all probably know. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, let me introduce my lieutenant, Lieutenant Sam Griffith. He's from the Altadena also.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, good evening, council. Again, my name is Sam Griffith, newest lieutenant to the Altadena CHP office. I just wanted to introduce myself and say thanks to the community. Thank you for our support as well, for the support that you give us to the Highway Patrol. As mentioned, we're committed to public service in our office and if there's anything that, you know, we can do to better serve the community, again, we're always willing for any advice that can be provided to us. Again, community relations is one of our key components of moving forward. So if there's anything that, you know, we can do as a Highway Patrol, please let us know. The partnerships of our allied agencies and collaborations with everyone here makes what we do better. We serve the public better as well. So we thank you. Again, my name is Sam Griffith, Lieutenant with Altadena, and I look forward to meeting members of the community and the council as well. I'll turn it over to Officer Bay.
Officer Bay, before you start, Diane, did you have?
Well, I just had actually a general question and probably a really stupid one, but what's an aggressive driver look like as opposed to a stupid driver that's just driving, you know, like just cutting in and out of traffic and stuff? How do we identify an aggressive driver that we report to you?
I'm sorry. So more so than not, you will see that person or that type of driver to be aggressive, meaning they're going to be moving out of lanes, trying to get from one lane to another, honking their horns, maybe flashing their high beams at someone else driving. And you more likely can tell just by the aggressive manner that they're driving. They're not driving to move from one lane to another, they're trying to get across all lanes of the freeway in a manner that's just putting other people at risk.
Okay, there are lots of those, so you may get a bunch of calls. Thank you.
Before you go, and before we have Officer Bay come up, I do have a question. They recently resurfaced Los Robles, a large swath of Los Robles south of Altadena, but it's traversed by a number of Altadenans. And in the middle lane, it's a left turn lane for both, going both ways. And it's a, you know, it's a single yellow line with a dashed yellow line on the inside. But what I've been seeing is that people will literally travel that lane in one direction or another for blocks and blocks to avoid the backup that might be in their direction. So my question really is, is that a legal maneuver to use that like as a, like what we would call a suicide lane as opposed to just pulling in and making your left?
It's generally just supposed to be that, making a left turn. However, again, there's a maximum distance that you can travel within that lane before it becomes illegal. So I don't know the exact number, but I believe it's somewhere about 300 feet before it becomes an illegal driving habit.
Okay, but they should not be using it as their own personal bypass lane?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
All right. It's nice to meet you, thank you, and welcome to Altadena.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Officer Bay?
Good evening, everybody. Officer Bay with the CHP. It's hard act to follow with my two managers here, but I'll do my best, make sure my throat is clear. So I can always provide that vehicle code section if anyone's interested regarding traversing in the middle lanes as well. We're, we have the, we call it the good book, which is our vehicle code book at our office. So if you have any questions regarding that, please don't hesitate to give us a call. So I'll keep this as brief as I can. So we investigated, the CHP investigated approximately 19 traffic crashes in unincorporated Altadena last month in September. Out of those 19 crashes, five resulted in injuries. One was investigated for driving under the influence of either alcohol or drugs. Three were hit and runs and the rest were just property damage, only no injuries reported. I also want to highlight that there was a bicycle crash on Woodbury Road last month near Glen Rose and the bicyclists sustained minor injuries at the time. Safety tip, we all know what's coming, at least the little ones here know, we have Halloween right around the corner. So what does that mean, right? That means that we have to be sure that our little ones are being safe and being seen. So whether that's the, I don't even know what's the trendy Halloween costume this year, I'm not even going to think about it, but hopefully it's reflective enough so that we know where they are. So that doesn't just rely on them to understand that they have to wear reflective clothing, but as drivers that we pay attention and understand that there might be more pedestrian traffic on our, in our neighborhood, which also segues into the office, California Office of Traffic Safety declared this month the pedestrian awareness month. So please keep that in mind that CHP and other allied agencies might be utilizing grant funding for any kind of pedestrian traffic enforcement. So that means crosswalk enforcement. One that the CHP participated in earlier last month was vehicles illegally passing school buses. So as you know, if you see a school bus that has the red lights flashing and a stop sign out, all traffic must stop. Can't just slowly go around, all traffic must stop. So there's that information right there. We have a Start Smart class for our young and upcoming drivers. It's going to be held actually at Glendale Police Department in November, on November 12th. I believe it's around 6:00 PM, but I, please don't quote me on that. So we'll just say in November 12th at this time. If you have more information or if you want to attend this class, please reach out to myself or our Public Information Officer, Officer Chanel Phillips, at our CHP office. And regarding notifications, CHP Altadena is now on X, so you can follow us for any kind of breaking news, traffic updates, whether that's traffic hazards or freeway closures. Our handle is @CHPAltadena, one word. So we'll be providing as close to up-to-date news as we can regarding that. Lastly, I do want to identify that we have some traffic concerns primarily at Jackson Elementary as well as Elliott Middle School. What I've observed in our community, there are cars double parking, vehicles not obeying crossing guards as they're standing in the middle of Lake Avenue, having to handle that burden of traffic coming both north and southbound. So please keep that in mind if you're in the area or if you know of someone that travels in the area, please understand that our crossing guards do one heck of a job. And so we have to be cognizant of the traffic congestion in the morning and the afternoon times too. But you might see myself or my counterpart out there, so we'll have a chat. Other than that, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions regarding CHPS?
Councilmember Marona?
Hi, thank you for coming. I have a question about e-bicycles. I've noticed a large swath of e-bicycles, particularly actually right in front of your station there on Windsor. What exactly are the kind of rules? Do they follow more of a bike path or should they be in the bike lane? Are they more of a vehicle that can traverse up the road with the cars? How does that?
So everything, as we're aware, it's a new technology. So the CHP is trying to stay up to date with both legislation as well as the technology that's starting to kind of ramp up production when it comes to e-bikes and e-scooters. So there's different classifications. To my understanding, there's at least a Class 1, a Class 2, and a Class 3. So anyone riding that's under 18 years-
Officer Bay, hold on one second. I'm going to ask whatever conversation is happening at the back of this room to please go out into the lobby. Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
Of course, of course. I'll try and keep this brief. So anyone under the age of 18 has to wear a helmet properly, not just one strap on, properly wear a helmet. But regarding that, if you're riding a Class 3 bicycle, then it can't go more than 28 miles an hour and you have to have at least, I believe, just human propulsion, if not electric propulsion as well. Any other information I can kind of provide that? It's, the CHP provides a class, it's in its infancy, so we're still trying to get information out, but we don't want to give the wrong information because by the time we give out information, we might be further in the future when it comes to that. So we do have information pamphlets that I can bring next time too.
Do they have to be 16 to be able to ride those? Because I've noticed a lot of younger people riding, particularly in that area, and it just seems the way they're riding is somewhat dangerous and also there's just been a lot of questions in the Meadows area as well as that turn where all the, you know, bikes are. Thanks. I'll connect with you later, we don't have to go over it now.
Of course. And we can also gain the insight from another council member too, if we would like.
Okay.
Okay, another time, yeah.
Okay, I've got a question from Councilmember Chapola.
Officer Bay, I just, so prior to coming to this meeting, a resident named Joe Oakley who lives on Altadena Drive, it's probably the fifth email I've gotten.
Okay.
Around Canyon Close, right around the turns.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of residents seem to be very concerned. I was, I drive it every day, so motorcyclists come down at night, like probably going 70 miles per hour.
Okay.
So I just want to put on your radar, residents are sending emails, they're very concerned, especially with the constructions going to be going on.
Right. And we're talking eastbound, right? Eastbound Altadena coming down or, I mean both?
He lives on the west side of the street, sounds like the concern is both sides.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it would be a great place because we have gotten so many complaints and because we know that there's limitations because of the blind curb in terms of what public works can do. There's no, we can't put a crosswalk in, we can't, there's limitations.
Correct.
So maybe we should put the speed trailer there at some point.
I believe it's already deployed, if I'm not mistaken. The speed trailer is deployed at that, just north of that location. So we understand the concerns.
You'll come visit once the speed trailer goes away.
Exactly, yeah, so. And we'll work with our allied, maybe the sheriff's station too, we can maybe do a little joint enforcement day.
Councilmember Maroney?
I've got your quick questions. I have noticed an astounding number of aggressive drivers on the road and on the freeway and I was wondering if there was any way you could give me the authority to pull them over?
Well, we are hiring, you know? We are, we are hiring, join the CHP 1000 if you're-
Maybe Wolf would be good.
And we are hiring non-sworn positions, so if you feel like being a dispatcher or you feel like being an auto mechanic, you know?
I want to pull people over. But seriously though, I have managed to go this far in my life without having a Twitter account.
Okay.
Are you guys on other social media or is it just?
Yes, we are, thank you for ushering me in there over there. So we're also on Instagram. Our Public Information Officer posts a lot of fun and informative stuff on CHP underscore Altadena, if you'd like to follow us. I swear, it's fun. And then we also have a Facebook group as well, CHP Altadena, but I'm, you just type in Altadena, you'll see a lot of cool stuff. But thank you very much.
I would say that it would be helpful if we cross-post what's on X at least to Facebook because then Facebook, at least there's groups in Altadena that can take that information and share it.
Of course.
But yes, there are some people who are no longer on X for many reasons.
For reasons, yes.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Wong?
Class 3, you must be 16 years of age or older. I just wanted to thank you and everybody at Altadena California Highway Patrol for taking care of eight schools on varying days on California Clean Air Day slash Walk to School Day. And it was really awesome, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but we wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to also say that the sheriff's department do, they do come out and help us too.
That's right.
So it's a, it's a family, we're a family.
Thank you, family.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Great, it's good to see you, welcome back.
Good to see you, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Captain, for coming in tonight. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to our friends at LA County Fire, and I understand Chief Sprangle is not here, but he sent someone in his stead.
My name is Chief Wilson, Los Angeles County Fire Department. Chief Sprangle apologizes for not being here tonight. He has another commitment, which I'm sure he would much rather be here with you tonight. Just to clear some things up, if you see a red, large red truck going down that center lane flashing lights, we're not being aggressive, we're just trying to get to the car, so. All business. So Chief Sprangle sent me to share the fire report for the community of Altadena for September. There were a total of 377 responses. Total patients receiving medical care was 271. Of those 271, 234 were transported for their medical complaints to local hospitals. There were three fires reported in Altadena. One was an outdoor fire resulting in $500 worth of damage. There were two miscellaneous or trash fires with no damage. 86 good intent calls as well as six traffic accidents. One reported as a vehicle versus bicyclist, which I think you guys talked about just previously. And one was reported as a vehicle versus pedestrian. So that is the total amount of responses for the community of Altadena. We want to leave you with some safety tips for the month. As you're well aware, Halloween is right around the corner. So we wanted to leave you with some helpful tips to make sure everybody stays safe during Halloween. Assure that your costumes are flame resistant and stay away from open flames. Wear light colored costumes, add reflective tape to the costumes and trick-or-treat bags. Make sure the kids carry flashlights. When crossing streets, only cross at the corners and do not cross between parked cars. Keep your home well lit and clear from obstacles that someone can trip over while trick-or-treating. And watch driving in neighborhoods with kids out trick-or-treating at night. That's it from the fire department. Is there any questions that I could help answer?
Questions for fire? Not one.
Not one?
Wow, we let you off easy tonight.
CHP gets all these questions?
Oh, I know.
Okay.
I know. Someone make up a question really quickly so he doesn't feel left out. No, no, just kidding. Go ahead.
How you doing?
Doing great, thank you very much.
You dressing up for Halloween? You gonna do something for Halloween?
I'm gonna be a firefighter for Halloween.
That seems-
Awesome.
I'm actually working that day, so yes.
We see you're demoing your outfit tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else legitimately? We appreciate you coming very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, nice to meet you too.
You too.
And now we are moving on to CERT. We've got Deb Halberstadt here. Come on up, Deb.
Good evening, council and my friends. We had our final quarterly meeting for Altadena CERT last Wednesday for 2024. Mark Yurlik, Altadena Reserve Member, Altadena Mountain Rescue Member, Altadena CERT Member, and SCE Vice President and Chief Safety Officer, gave a presentation about wildfires and SCE's mitigation programs. He talked about squirrels eating power lines, downed power lines, electrons or electricity in a house that could help to start a brush fire, having fire extinguishers at the ready, shuffling, PASS, PASS is how you use a fire extinguisher, troublemen, drought monitors and sensors deployed in all of our San Gabriel mountains. There are now 800 of them that are owned by SCE. SCE's fire science team, public safety power shut-offs or PSPSes, cost of vegetation management, underground wiring considerations versus standard service, the apps people could put on their phones and links for more information about wildfire, and much more. He was really good. I hope to plan with Maria Greikin and the LA County Fire for our Altadena CERT Team Refresher Training and CERT Basic Training Course in 2025. In October, as an aside, but not really, the Red Cross will be having a Sound the Alarm event, I've given you all that information, based out of grocery outlets, parking lots- event, I've given you all that information, based out of grocery outlets, parking lot, October twenty-sixth, from ten AM to one PM. The Red Cross volunteers install free smoke alarms to anyone who needs them. They will also come to your house and check your smoke alarms. They will help you put in more smoke alarms if you feel you need them. The appointment link is www.redcross.org forward slash LA Home Fire, or call three one zero four four five nine nine one four. I've been in quite a few STAs, as they're called, or, uh, Sound the Alarm, and they're great, and servicing people of all classes really helps. It's not just old people, sometimes young people don't know they should have them in their apartments, either. Smoke alarms can save lives. Our next quarterly CERT meeting will be Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at five thirty at the Altadena Community Center. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Deb?
Dorothy?
Repeat the phone number.
The phone number, okay. The phone number is, to make appointments for Sound the Alarm is three one zero four four five nine nine one four. Thank you, everybody.
Good to see you, Deb.
Thank you.
We are, we're a clappy bunch tonight. All right. Okay, we are moving on to our community reports. First, we have Parks and Rep Guillermo. Do I see Guillermo? No Guillermo? What happened? You saw him? Oh, we gave you, okay, so let's move Guillermo. No Guillermo, okay, let's move on, and let's see if he comes back to join us. Okay, we are going to move to Chamber of Commerce, and I don't know that I see Judy Matthews either. Oh, is she back there? Oh, you're, oh, there you are, Judy, good to see you. I don't have my glasses on, maybe I should put them on. Oh, I'm becoming my mother. Glasses on, glasses off. Halfway down the nose, exactly. Good to see you.
Hello, everyone. Just so you know, I'll be, I'm coming from another meeting each time there's a meeting here, but I promised to be here, I just have to come in later. Good evening, Altadena Town, Town Council and the community. Altadena Chamber of Commerce and Civic Association is excited to announce upcoming events and meetings, and we encourage the community to get involved. The Altadena Chamber of Commerce two thousand twenty-four Power Breakfast is being held on Thursday, October seventeenth, at eight AM to nine thirty AM, at the Altadena Town and Country Club. Guest speaker, California State Treasurer, Fiana Ma. The Power Breakfast is open to the community. A RSVP is requested, and there is a ten dollar fee for non-Chamber members. Continental breakfast will be provided. The Chamber provides the public to join us on November five, Tuesday, November five, from ten AM to ten thirty for our open session board meetings, the first Tuesday of each month, excluding legal holidays. Chamber is in the process of finalizing our hybrid meeting, so stay in touch. We hope to be right here. The San Gabel Valley Association of Chamber Executives Lunch and Learn Virtual Webinars, which I speak about every time I come here, for the remainder of the year are October seventeenth and Oc-, and November twenty-first at twelve noon. Altadena Chamber of Commerce will host the November webinar. Please join the Chamber for its annual holiday sip and shop at Mariposa Junction going country western. Wee-hoo! On Friday, on Friday, December sixth, from fi-, uh, five to nine PM, please join us. Uh, you may visit the Altadena Chamber of Commerce website to review these events and, and more at the altadenachambercommerce dot R. Thank you.
Any questions for Judy before she goes? It's been, nobody? Okay, we will see you for sure at the sip and shop. Great, thank you. Oh, now we're, okay. Okay, I did see, um, Guillermo come back in, so we will move to Parks and Rec. Oh, my word.
Well, I'm getting popular. All right, so I'm gonna go through some of the Parks and Rec updates we got going on in Altadena for Loma Alta Park and Farnsworth Park, and Charles White Park, so I can go to the next slide. Um, so some of the new programs we got going on, um, for winter season, we're expecting two new, uh, contract instructors, it's gonna be for a knitting and crochet class at Farnsworth Park, and then also an exploring art and nature riding workshops. So, uh, right now they're doing the, the paperwork, but those classes are expected to begin in January for winter. All right, and then next slide. And then for Loma Alta, um, some of the new sports we got going on, um, actually is basketball, so for the winter season, that's gonna be the big popular one, that's actually gonna start December second and all the way to April fifth. And then we did change a little bit of our, uh, gym hours, so on Saturdays, we're actually gonna just be opening it up all day, just for open gym. Uh, but we still have our basketball clinics for Wednesdays and Thursdays, but do expect some interruptions during the winter season, because that's when we have all our games, so we do close out the gym just for the games. All right. Next one. And then, we got a lineup of events, so we added, uh, three new events per park, so we have our Lunar New Year, Black History Month, and Pride Month, so those are all lined up on there for the next year, so, and some of the upcoming ones we got going on is actually next week on Friday, at the farmer's market, we're gonna be having our Trick or Treat Village. Um, I did wanna offer to the town councils, if anybody's interested to volunteer to bring their car out, we're actually doing a trunk or treat, so we have all the decorations, we just need, basically, between four or five vehicles, we'll decorate for you. Um, so if you are interested, shoot me an email, um, and we'll have you guys, uh, set up, all right? And then, Dia de los Muertos, that's actually one of our more popular one now, uh, that's gonna be a big event, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have drinks, we're gonna set up an altar, um, at Loma Alta Park the week of, um, the November first, so that Monday, we're gonna have it set up, so if any of you guys are interested or know anybody, um, please provide pictures, and we can post them at the altar. For those that aren't really too aware of Dia de los Muertos, it's more of just like a celebration of, um, their passing, so we try to acknowledge, like, by putting small trinkets or gifts that, um, that loved one, uh, used to like, so sometimes, like, if it was a child, their favorite toy, if it was an older adult, maybe their favorite, um, drink, or favorite beverage, um, but yeah, so just little things like that, if you wanna leave as a memento, more than welcome to. Um, the only thing we just ask is that when you do drop it off, um, be sure to pick it up the following day, because we do clean up the altar after that. Um, and then our Harvest Festival is also Friday, November fifteenth, so the next three weeks, uh, three to four weeks, we got a couple of events going on. And then also Farnsworth Park, some of you guys have been there, that's probably one of our biggest events they have there, they actually set up a little haunted house for everybody, some of the kids get too scared, so, uh, they end up leaving a little early. Uh, but yeah, so if you guys are interested, uh, check it out, but I'll make sure I always bring out the, our flyers and stuff, so we can market it. In the back, I did leave our new gym hours, so if anybody's interested, and then also for the new registration for those basketball clinics. The next one? And then, some of our core community partners, as you guys are aware, at, um, Farnsworth Park, they're actually doing a play, The Guys and Dolls, uh, with Altadena Music Theater, so if anybody's interested, please come out, they're doing the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday shows. And then also in partnership with our Altadena Libraries, they've been coming out and doing Storytime, parents love it. And then with, uh, Mrs. Zeta from Children of One Plan, is actually gonna be hosting her event, uh, for, I believe it's Live Healthy, Live Happy America, so she's gonna be doing, um, some showcases with her dancers and musicians. And then some upcoming stuff, um, oh, sorry, I didn't change the events part, but for Charles White Park, for some of you that had attended, uh, last weekend, they actually did, um, an outreach with the community there, just kind of regarding, uh, um, some of the upcoming projects there. And then I did reach out to the Parks Bureau, um, Sergeant Nisanoff actually gave me some statistics regarding the, their patrol units, so they did mention that there was a possi- a possible assault with a deadly weapon, but he did mention to me that the victim was intoxicated, and then, he did also mention to me that there was an alleged robbery, which is the same corresponding for the, uh, possible assault. Uh, the victim was also intoxicated, and he informed me that the person found the missing items within his belongings when he was at the hospital. So, he's, he's more leaning on that it probably wasn't an actual robbery. And then, um, they did get a report for no open container, so they did ticket for that, and then he did mention to me that a minimum they do is one patrol per day, so it just told me that it's at various times, sometimes they'll do it in the mornings, sometimes in the evenings, and in the afternoons. Yes, every single day. Yeah, and then, if you guys have any questions, or just wanna reach out to me, um, here's my contact information, I along put the supervisors of each park, uh, for their contact information. Yeah, any questions?
Any questions before we-
I got, I got a question, and an observation, I couldn't help but notice the distinct difference between Loma Alta, Farnsworth, and Charles White Park in those slides.
Yes.
Um, do you guys do anything down at Charles White, or are you planning on doing anything there?
So Charles White Park is currently a passive park, so it's the equivalent of, like, Triangle Park that's right here next to, uh, El Patron, and so it's just a park that's there, so people can just go just for passive activity, but, um, the anticipation is that once they finish construction, they wanna make it into, um, a normalized park as the other two, uh, but it, again, it might, this, it might depend, because it's kind of repetitive to do the same events, same activities, especially within a short distance, but the way that they've categorized it, for example, with Farnsworth Park, is they partner up Farnsworth and Triangle Park, so the supervisor oversees both of those parks, and then Loma Alta, that supervisor's also oversees, um, Charles White, so it's not like a, a separate type of park.
Okay, uh, do you know when the, uh, construction's gonna be done?
Um, they said it's supposed to finish by two thousand twenty-six, so the summer of two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
Completion, like, everything.
Until then, we'll just have open containers and robberies, gotcha, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I follow.
I will say that Charles White Park is heavily used, especially by our soccer community, so there are a lot of games and a lot of people there on the weekends, for sure. Um, I had a question myself about the proposed conversion of, um, tennis courts at Farnsworth Park to pickleball courts. Is that moving ahead? Where-
No, so for right now, that's, um, just been a rumor, but for, for the existing, um, the tennis court that's there that's existing, we've been instructed that that's not gonna change.
Okay, and no plans at Loma Alta Park either?
Correct, there hasn't been no plans.
Great, so then, really, we've got new pickleball courts coming into Charles White Park as part of its development?
Yes.
Okay, so that can take some of the pressure off of Farnsworth Park, at least.
Yes, and that's kind of the reason why that they partner some of the parks, so that some of the amenities can be at one, and then versus the other one.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, I got one more. Uh, I just remembered, uh, we, we had spoken a while back about, uh, re-leveling those baseball fields at Farnsworth, uh, they're, they're pretty wavy, and there's a bump at the, uh, at the end of the infield, the ball can hop into some kids' faces. Uh, I, I know I got at least a soft commitment from the districts, uh, from the supervisor's office, uh, is there any progress on that, or any word?
So I did speak with, um, I believe it was Steve Dennis, who's like their director for the grounds maintenance, and he did say that that's something that they are working on, so they're gonna be moving forward with that, too. Um, he hasn't given us the exact date, but let me follow up with him to see when he can actually give us a, a completion date.
Awesome, that's great to hear, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No? Great, it's so good to see you, thank you for coming, we'll see you at some of these upcoming events, and then council members, if you're interested in trunk or treat, please reach out to Guillermo directly, uh, it'd be fun to have an already made theme for your vehicle.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much, good to see you.
No problem.
Okay, we are moving on to Eaton Canyon Nature Center. Oh, there you are, it's good to see you, that's your Park Superintendent, Richard Smart?
Yes. That's only been here three months, is that right?
Welcome.
That's right, yes. Clap it up! Uh, thank you for, so much for that warm welcome. Um, normally, I think you all may, uh, y'all know Kenya Estrella, she's the Recreation Services Supervisor, uh, she couldn't be here today, um, because she is taking college classes, so she's still working, um, on furthering her education, which is wonderful, but it gave me the opportunity to introduce myself, so my name is Richard Smart, pronouns he/him, and I am the Regional Park Superintendent at Eaton Canyon Nature Center. As Diane was saying, I've only been here for three months, it's been an awesome three months, um, but for, prior to that, for four and a half years, I was the Park Superintendent at Stoneview Nature Center in Culver City, which is also part of LA County Parks and Recreation. I wanted to talk with you all about some park improvements, as well as some park programs that have been taking place just since I've been there. First one, park improvement I wanted to talk about were the bear trash cans, so, right now, we have four trash cans installed, two in the park, um, and the two that are in the park are across the wall, so as people are walking on the hiking trail, and those have a, each of those has a trash bin receptacle and a recycling receptacle. Then we also have two more bear trash cans installed at the Pinecrest Gate, which that, uh, so people who are accessing the park through Pinecrest can also have, uh, now have those cans available. We are working to get at least six more bear trash cans installed throughout the park. Um, the, we have them, they are coming to us, by they, I mean, the department, uh, they were at another park, but they actually don't need those, and so we are gonna get them, just have to install some concrete footings to get them secure in place, but we already have the map, and we know where we're gonna put them. I did wanna say, uh, on behalf of Kenya, and our Ink Canyon Nature Center associates, and our biologist, Christian, they applied for a grant with Pasadena Community Foundation to get our first set of bear trash cans, and those are the ones installed across the stream, they were such a big hit, it's helping us get the momentum to acquire all these additional bear trash cans. I know our grounds maintenance crew, it saves them about forty-five minutes every single day, because they're not having to pick up all the trash that bears leave behind when they knock over those drums. So it's really great all around. The next improvement I wanted to talk about is at the trailhead, we are getting a new restroom installed, these, this will be a prefab ADA restroom. It's gonna replace the porta-potties that are up at the trailhead. It will have plumbing, it's gonna be great, um, it's going to be installed, or should open up in summer of two thousand twenty-five, so in about six months, um, but we are excited for it, although I'm relatively new to the canyon, I cannot wait, so I can only imagine the park visitorship and how mu- how happy they will be, because that's gonna be a huge improvement for the park. Going into some programs, uh, a program I'm super excited to talk about is a co-program we're doing with the, uh, with Cougar Conservancy, we're offering a free program to the public on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. It's gonna focus on coexisting with mountain lions, with cougars, with local wildlife in the San Gabriel Mountain area, and one thing I'm really excited about, it's gonna include safety training for recreationists, for hikers, in regards of what to do if you encounter a cougar, if you encounter a bear, if you encounter a bobcat, if you encounter a dog off-leash. So, the program will take place, again, on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from ten AM to noon, it's gonna be more family-friendly activities, with different types of, uh, tabling and activities that everyone can engage in, but from noon to one thirty, the president of the Cougar Conservancy is gonna give a presentation, that's gonna be more focused for adults ages sixteen and up, um, but it, once again, I think it's a very relevant issue, definitely something we could, think a lot about at Eaton Canyon, so I encourage you all to come to that. And then building off of what, uh, our colleagues are doing at our local parks, Stoneview, or Stone, I always say that, 'cause that's my previous park, uh, Eaton Canyon Nature Center, we're offering our first Dia de los Muertos event on Saturday, November second. It will be two PM to seven PM, free program, come and go as you please, but it's also gonna feature an altar, it's being, it's a custom altar created by, um, the artists Ophelia and Rosanna Esparza and family, it's gonna, that altar's gonna focus on nature, so being very, uh, play space, and in addition to that, we're gonna have some Aztec dancers, we're gonna have procession, as well as community booths and different types of engagement. And finally, this Thursday, October seventeenth, so in just two days, it's the last of our Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations, so on Thursday, October seventeenth, six to seven PM, we're gonna have a guided ethnobotany walk. So, one of our volunteers, Brenda Kyle, she's gonna lead this walk, that will talk to people about local plants, how they have been traditionally used, and I think it's gonna be a wonderful, uh, program. Lastly, starting on November first, we are gonna go back to our more limited hours, our winter hours, where we're open eight AM to five PM. So currently, we're open eight AM to seven thirty PM, but starting in November, and going all the way through the end of February, we'll be open eight AM to five PM. Still open Tuesday through Sunday, closed on Mondays. And that's what I wanted to talk about.
So good to see you, thank you so much, and welcome for being here. Do we have any questions for him before we let him go, and I did just- questions for him before we let him go? And I did just have one and I lost it. Oh, I know. Who's responsible for emptying the trash bins? Which company?
It's not a company. It is us.
It's you?
It's us.
Okay. So if, okay, and so since they're bear trash cans, nobody's going to notice that they're overflowing, right? You just know, you just, because that was one of the issues we had at the Pinecrest Gate?
Yes.
Was that those bins always were overflowing. And then we had trash throughout Pinecrest and Boering and Crescent as a result of people not having a place to put it. But you guys are handling it now, so it should be...
It should be. I, there's two bear trash cans up there right now. I have requested a third. And we had built some capacity in the short time I was there with the drum, the barrels, 55-gallon drums, that's why I keep calling them a drum. And I put covers over them, but the bear trash cans will keep litter from, I think, you know, from windblowing it out, birds taking it out as well. But our team, we are supposed to be checking those trash cans every single morning. So if that's not taking place, you can reach out to us and we will be on top of that.
Great. Any other questions?
I just, I just have a quick comment. I would really encourage people to go to the mountain lion thing that they're doing because we, as part of Eaton Canyon, they had an online one that I could go to. And it'd be amazing what you will find out. One of the things they mentioned was to put a, raise their, raise the bottom of your hedge, right, up two feet, because then the mountain lions won't hide in there, and neither will the coyotes. So that's what I've been doing. And I just think there are things that you'll find out, too. I had a bobcat in my backyard the other day. So yeah, I would really encourage everybody to take advantage of it. It's a really good, interesting program.
Councilmember Wilkins?
A couple of weeks ago, someone caught a candle that was lit, left over by some bushes randomly. I'm wondering, if someone were to see that, who should they report that to officially? Is there any signage for folks to do something if they see that?
There, there is signage at each of the entrances regarding numbers to call to report violations, things that you're concerned about. We were that candle. One of our park volunteers is the one who noticed it, quickly put it out. It was the one, at least I saw, that was a tea candle. But you can always report things like that to Eaton Canyon Nature Center. You can either come down into the park to report it, you can call us, you can email me. I'll leave my cards in the back. I have my old cards from my old park, but my email address is the same. So I can leave those in the back. But just let us know anytime you see something that is questionable, you're unsure about. We want to keep this park clean. We want to keep it safe for people and for wildlife. So definitely let us know. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That's my kind of day today. I was talking to Vice Chair Wolf here earlier.
Oh, yes.
And he had been up there, and he wanted to tell you that you do a better job trash collecting than UWS, and thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
All right. All right. Are we good? Great. Thank you so much. It was so nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. We are definitely going to get control of ourselves in our November meeting. Okay, we are going to bring up Lisa Brought from Senator Portentino's office.
Good evening to the council and to everyone in the community. For those who don't know me, my name is Lisa Brought. I'm the district representative for Senator Anthony Portentino, and I represent Altadena. I wanted to give you a brief little update. And as you're all probably aware, the governor signed the agreement on the state budget a couple months ago. Balanced the state budget for 2024, 2025 years. I don't know if people realize, they also prospectively balanced it for 2025, 2026 year. And many of the programs that we feared would be cut are, have not been cut. We did not lose them. There were no teacher layoffs. There was no reduction in the core community college program. So that benefits our, our partners at PCC. And there's about a billion dollars that is going to be provided to local governments to combat the homelessness issues. In the past couple of weeks, the governor's been very busy signing a lot of bills and a lot of the senators' bills. But I don't want to tell you a whole bunch of stuff that's going to get repeated next month. So I want to let you know that in your next meeting, Senator Portentino is committed to come here and talk to you about all of his legislation, the new legislation, and what he's been doing for this area for eight years. So I hope that you'll all be at next town council meeting on November 19th and for a full, full legislative update. I also wanted to mention that this Saturday, our office is hosting a mental health and wellbeing town hall at PCC. I did put, it's from 9:00 to 12:00. We have several speakers, several resources, and, and a whole talking kind of thing. And my, the flyers for them, we would ask people to RSVP so we get an idea of how many people there are. The flyers are on the piano back there. I also wanted to let you know that there will be no, every year we have a holiday party. The senator throws a big holiday party in December. As most of you know, senators terming out, our office closes on November 30th, and the doors close and lock. Well, we will all be unemployed. So before that, on, on November 9, we're going to have a, an appreciation, a community appreciation day. And that's going to be held at Glendale Community College in the Student Center from 2:00 to 4:00. So we hope that everybody will come and attend, say hello, say thank you, say goodbye to all of us. And you'll also have that opportunity next month as well. So I think, I think I got all the things I wanted to cover. Does anybody have any questions?
Will you repeat again where the community appreciation day at Glendale Community College is?
It's at the Student Center.
Student Center.
I'm not exactly sure where that is, but hopefully everybody's, maybe GPS will tell you where the Student Center is. That's all I know about that.
Okay. Any other questions? It was so good to see you. I'm not sure what is happening over here.
Did Wolf have a question?
I don't know. Did Wolf have a question? That was the question. No? He's, he's quite content. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. It was so good to see you. We'll see him and you next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. All right, we are moving on to our community, I'm sorry, our special presentation. Is James Aragon here? I thought that was you. Please come up. I'm Victoria. It's so nice to meet you. Mr. Aragon is the trustee that serves on the PCC Board of Trustees that covers Altadena. So he's new to the board-ish. So welcome here.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Go Lancers.
So my name is James Aragon. It's a pleasure to be here with the council and the public. I do represent Area 2. I know that also the part of Altadena is in District, I mean, Area 1. I lived in Altadena, well, I've been living in the district now for about 22 years. I lived in Altadena for about six years up on Wapalo, and then I moved down into Queensberry Road, about a mile and a half from PCC. So I was at PCC for 26 years as a counselor and as a professor. So after I retired early, I just, it just happened that Mr. Osterling retired himself, and I thought about running for the board, and I was encouraged. And I was able to get 80% of the vote. So I thank my constituents for that wonderful support. So let's see. What, I want to just highlight a couple of things and then kind of talk from the heart a little bit, what I see are some of the concerns at PCC. There were some questions that were posed to me in regards to our relationship with PUSD. Some of the highlights that are happening right now with our K-12 partnership is our early college magnet at John Muir High School, our PCC Northwest campus. We also have a core education at Jefferson Elementary School. And let's see, that's the highlight there. And again, I'll be meeting with the, the superintendent soon for PUSD in particular. There was a question posed in regards to our transitional housing for our foster youth that opened in August. And we're currently serving, we have two units, and we hope to have another 10 units open up in the future. And we're partnering with the city, county, and nonprofits to, to make that happen. Okay. There, there was a question on our dual enrollment, and I want to let you know, I didn't mention that. I'm currently teaching at Glendale Community College. So the Student Center, I know really well where the Student Center is. So if you want, I was just there today for an event. It's kind of in the middle of campus, but there's only one Student Center, so you can find it on the map. So I'm teaching there part-time. I love it. I've taught in dual enrollment. There's some things I can say about dual enrollment, but I wanted to just give you the numbers for our head count for 2023, 2024. In comparison, we were about 262 students when we first started the dual enrollment. We're up to almost 1,000. We're at 956 for students, student head count. Our enrollments are about 1,700. That means as far as like the courses, the course offerings go. And I just want to, so, you know, we, we should be serving all of the high schools that are within the PUSC, PUSD district, and also outside of the district. We have to be careful about what schools we serve outside of the district, so we're not overlapping with any schools in Glendale or ELAC. Like I said, I taught in dual enrollment for about two years. It's a very unique talent to teach high school students. I've always taught college students. So they were, so it's very important that our faculty that teach within the high schools are trained properly and that our high school students are prepared for that experience. That's what I would say from a personal level. The question was asked about our Women's Business Center. That just opened a few weeks ago. They had a big ceremony. That's in partnership with our own small business development center, our award-winning development center. So we are recruiting and we're looking for partnerships to help small businesses with women in particular to serve and to help them succeed. Let's see. That's housed at our Foothill Campus, which is on Foothill, right? Let's see. The other question was, oh, on, on the Designated No Debt Act, we just, we just passed a endorsement for that, and that's Adam Schiff, right, Relief Act. And we're hoping, that act is hoping to maximize Pell Grant up to $14,000. I, myself as a student, received Pell Grant, and I couldn't have completed my college without that support. So we're in full support of that. And yes, in '23, '24, just to let you know, in the Pell Grant, it was distributed to close to 9,000 students at PCC. The last thing is on AB 1705 in regards to the math and the, the placement in the, in the elimination of the, well, it's kind of the remedial courses. But I would just say that, again, as I've taught and I've counseled students, I mean, the number one thing is a preparation. Some students are not prepared for calculus and some of the higher-level maths. So to eliminate some of those courses, I thought hurt, but PCC is working hard to update their practices when it comes to placing students in the proper course, having support courses for them for calculus and the higher-level math courses, so that students succeed in their, in their math and their English courses in particular. So that's what I have there. I can field questions. I can talk about, what I want to say about, one of the things that was very important for me, I mean, I'm sure some of you saw that in the news. I mean, there was a lot of things going on with PCC, some vote of no confidence on the superintendent, on the school board. Like I said, I worked on the campus for 26 years. My hope was, you know, to create a, help create a healthy environment. I believe it's going that way. We have Dr. Jose Gomez, our new superintendent president. We're working well with the academic senate and, and just keeping students first and remembering that's why we're there, is to serve our students. And I, and I tell my, my former colleagues that, you know, it's a wonderful place to work. Let's work together. Let's create a healthy environment for our students. That's where I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Do we have?
Here come the questions.
I've got some questions. So go ahead.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Chipola?
First, as a graduate of PCC, some of the best professors I've had in my entire education were at PCC. So kudos to the entire organization. Has the FAFSA rollout affected student enrollment for you guys?
I'm sorry?
Has the FAFSA delay affected student enrollment? Do you know?
It hasn't necessarily affected what's, what is, what's happening. Was there trying to eliminate the abuse of bots and using the FAFSA? So they were trying to work out some kinks in order to make sure that wasn't happening. So it did affect some of the students, but it's, they're trying to capture those fake enrollments, and that's what caused some of the slowdown. Yeah.
I think that they delayed the rollout this year until December 1, which is later than it was last year, to try to help offset some of that. I did want to let you know that, and not to take any thunder from our education committee, but the superintendent of PUSD will be here tomorrow night in this room to talk about Measures R and EE. So if you're around at 6:00 PM, she'll be here.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
It's my turn.
Oh, it is your turn. Okay, Councilmember O'Malley.
I thought the Wolf was going to ask me a question.
I'm a, no, the Wolf, the Wolf, he never, he never got past high school.
Okay.
It's not his fault. I was wondering, I don't know exactly, so I was wondering if you could tell me, the kind of professors you have teaching your dual enrollment programs, are they full-tenured professors? Are they associate professors? Where, where do they come from?
Okay, the ones that I know in particular are usually our adjunct because we have a hard, and I'm, this is being, I mean, it's, it's a hard time recruiting our full-time tenured professors to teach in the high schools because they want to teach in, they want to teach college students.
Right, adjunct professors.
So we end up hiring adjuncts. There are some that may be teaching in particular disciplines. But again, it goes back to the training, making sure that we do really good professional development for those teachers, but...
Right. I was actually going to make a comment on that because you said that you had to teach these guys to properly teach high school. And I know people who are trained to properly teach high school, and they are high school teachers. And
Is that yourself?
The dual enrollment tends to cut down into the AP classes and the honors courses, doesn't it?
In what respect? You're talking about as far as...
Well, if you're looking at the same group of students, if they can take a, I'm not going to say relatively easy GCC class for college credit, or take a, a pretty rigorous AP class for college credit, they have the incentive to go over to do the dual enrollment class, don't they?
I don't, the experience I've had in teaching, let me, I'm going to just be honest with you. The experience that I've had in teaching the dual enrollment, those students were very well-prepared. They, they're in the academy. They knew what they wanted to do. I think dual enrollment also kind of needs to reach out for those students that are a higher risk, right? Just because, that's just been my personal experience. So that wouldn't necessarily consider going to college right away. So that's, that's just my thought on that.
All right, thank you.
Is that kind of answered?
Answered?
Okay, great.
More or less, he said. Okay.
More or less.
Any other questions?
No, it's great to see you. Thank you so much for being here. It was nice to finally connect with you.
Yes.
Nick says hello from, he's actually in Chicago at a leadership conference, but his proxy says hello.
Okay, great. And you know where you can reach me. I'm on the website, you know, Pasadena.edu. My big old face is right there. So thank you so much. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move to our committee reports. First up is land use. Chair Markison.
Okay, yes. We met on October 1, and we did not vote on any items. We did have a couple of presentations that we expect to be having come to our meeting in November. So one is Barber knee. Anyway, the, and then I also wanted to mention that in case you hadn't heard or were under a rock, the, the Polyfields Project, that CUP has been withdrawn. So that project is no longer going to be coming before, what, Chris? So that project is no longer going to be coming before, what, Chris? Okay. That is no longer going to be coming before us. And also, as everybody knows, and please be careful on, we're now on to the redoing of the road Altadena Drive north of New York. They're going to be doing some works, cement work south of New York as well, but north of New York. And there's a big curve and they're going to have the road dug up and there's the canyon. So please, everybody be careful there. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving on, Safe Streets, Dorothy Wolf.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, everybody. So just quickly, the Safe Streets Committee meets the fourth Thursday of every month. So the next meeting, I wrote it down, let's see, is October the 24th, Thursday. And some of the conversations will be focused on just some reflections on Walk to School Day, but also coming up in November, the time changes, which we've heard a lot in this meeting today. So it is probably the most dangerous time for our residents in Altadena. And two of our neighbors died two years ago trying to cross the street in Altadena, which has led to some traffic safety measures being implemented by LA County Public Works. But I want to make sure every time that somebody in our community dies or gets severely injured is trauma in our community, not only to the family, but our community, our neighbors, when we see those victims. So I want us to focus on World Day of Remembrance in November and also really being mindful as rush hour happens at 4:30 and it will be completely dark. So really to continue our mindfulness that we've done. And now I want to pass it off to just, I want to thank everybody that was involved because, again, this wasn't my Walk to School Day. This started by everybody else. And it's just the energy of our community in Altadena that does so many great things and does care about the safety of everybody in our community. So we definitely will dedicate our November, our meeting in November to Tarni Faloon and Kent Pulver that lost their lives trying to cross the street in our community two years ago and the many other people that get forgotten. So on a good note, let's keep on working for safer streets. And I just want to thank all the council members that participated over the years in Walk to School Day and all of the intentions. So thank you very much. And I just want to toss it, maybe Kim can start.
Hi, everyone. Just a little bit about Clean Air Day. On the week of October 2nd, eight Altadena schools and over 400 students and families, well, family members participated in Clean Air Day. The event was centered around bringing awareness of the need to protect and improve the air we breathe. Councilmember Stuart Gordon and I were able to join the event at the Altadena Library Hub. And later on that week, Councilmember Molden participated with Jackson Elementary and some of, and we witnessed a massive community event. I've never seen those streets so full of enthusiastic pedestrians and some of our future cleaner advocates, students and families all coming together to show their support for their community and advocate for clean air. It was an absolutely wonderful sight to see and an even more wonderful feeling to be a part of it. And we look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Isis, do you want to say anything?
I would just like to say that I know the kids really enjoyed the Walk to School Day from Jackson Elementary. And I'd like to give a big thank you to the Altadena Seventh Day Adventist to allow us to use their parking lot. We use it as our starting point and we had about 60-plus families participate with Jackson alone and had a dance party when we arrived at the school. So the kids were really excited about it. And we also had kids coming up from the south as well, from near.
Okay. Bye. Sorry.
I want to say that the Walk to School Day actually started in 1997 and it raised awareness for traffic safety around schools and encouraged neighborhood connectivity. And it's always celebrated the first Wednesday in October. It was a beautiful event. Nikki and I were there and Kim, we were interviewed on TV. The children was excited and grateful. They had wonderful swag bags. We had Elliot there, Altadena Arch Magnet. We had Pasadena Wardoff School there. It was a great event. So I would encourage anyone that have children or you don't have children, try to show up next year. It's a real beautiful community event and the kids loved it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take back.
Yeah, just to quickly, thank you to the Altadena Library and LA County Parks and Melissa in Spirit.
Great. Okay, we're going to move on to 6.3, West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan. Melissa Marona.
Thank you. On September the 25th, the Los Angeles County Regional Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan and final EIR. The planning commission raised this to the Board of Supervisors for a vote at the December 10th Board Meeting. Given the concerns that we did hear at the October 1st Altadena Town Council Land Use Meeting, the committee members did meet with LA County Planning. A fact sheet will be forthcoming from the LA County to specifically address the concerns of those voiced at the land use meeting. It should be noted that there will be no density increases in high fire areas. Properties in the Angeles National Forest cannot achieve maximum density under existing regulations nor with the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan. The Altadena Town Council has shown the plans and mentioned the West San Gabriel Area Valley Plan at most of the meetings for the last six months, called for comments on the plan. And anyone interested now in the plan may send their comments directly to Catherine Barger's office. And you may find her information on the county website or see me for that exact email, which is Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, at bos.lacounty.gov. Or you may go to the hearing in person downtown or you may make your comments via telephone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we've got, oh, the holiday party. So most people in the community know that this town council has a raucous holiday party at our December meeting. This year, we are going to partner with the Altadena Library Foundation, the Altadena Rotary, and the Altadena Chamber of Commerce in hosting our December meeting and holiday party at the Rose Bowl. The Rose Bowl is looking to expand its outreach to include Altadena, and this is one step in that direction. So we, they will be offering tours to Altidinans. So look for information on all of our social media sites as we put the details for that event forward. But that'll be at our December meeting, which I believe is December, oh, somebody, 17th, 19th? 17th. It's 17th. It's the week before, is it? It's the 17th, so December 17th. So look for information to come. It should be a lot of fun. There's many people that have been lifelong Altidinans that have never toured the Rose Bowl and you'll get a chance to do that. And the Rose Bowl will be providing food and beverages as well. So we look forward to that. Okay. Education Committee, Sylvia Vega, Chair.
Good evening. There are three important events happening. The first is taking place tomorrow here, evening at 6:00 PM. PUSD Superintendent Dr. Elizabeth Blanco will be presenting information on Measures R and EE, followed by a Q and A. Following the Q and A will be the Candidate Forum for PUSD School Board Trustee 2. On Tuesday, October 22nd at 7:00 PM, Pasadena Education Network will be hosting a middle school parent panel for fifth grade parents. They will cover middle school options and what parents of current middle schoolers have to say about their schools. This is an in-person panel and will give you a good frame of reference as you tour the middle schools this fall. This will take place at Norma Coombs Elementary School at 2600 Paloma Street in Pasadena. And then on Tuesday, October 27th at 7:00 PM, Pasadena Education Network will be hosting a high school option Zoom program for eighth grade parents. Parents will be introduced to key features of PUSD high school experience from core academics and electives to athletics, extracurriculars, and college prep. You'll come away with insights that will complement what you learn on the high school tours. Information on the Candidate Forum is posted on our Altadena Town Council website and the Penn events will be posted shortly. I sent an email to you, Dorothy. Flyers are in the back for both events. Thank you.
We do hope that the community will come out tomorrow night. It's very important that you understand what's before you with Measures R and EE. And then to hear from the candidates in District 2, I reside in District 2 myself, so it'll be good to hear from them directly. This is the only Altadena-specific event that the school district is hosting. And that'll be in partnership with MBBA. All right, we are skipping the next and moving on to our highly anticipated election, Pat Sutherland, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm going to introduce to everybody the candidates for the Altadena Town Council election, which is coming up. After everybody is finished, then I'll give you some additional information about the actual election day. We're going to go by, which is very common, as someone has complained, by council, by census tract number. And if there are more than, if there's more than one person, then it will also be alphabetically thereafter. So Connor, you have three minutes and, well, no, the wolf isn't going to do it, but Chris is going to let you know.
And we're in 4601. Yes.
My name is Connor Sapola. I am seeking a second term as Representative 4601 alongside Victoria Knapp. My wife and I and my three kids love living in beautiful Altadena. Being as part of this council is an opportunity to keep it that way. The highlights of my first term revolve around roads, the Holliston Corridor project that was the result of the Supervisor's Directive, the inclusion of the segment of the Altadena and Washington roadway project. Second R is restaurants, spearheading Mia Ty's CUP pursuits and assisting with the canvassing for Bernie. And relationships, building relationships with the members of this council, with our community partners has been an honor and very enlightening for me and very helpful, I hope, for the community. So I would appreciate at least 10 votes as I'm running unopposed and I look forward to serving this community again. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next would, oops, sorry. Next would be in 4602, Nick Aronson, who is not here tonight, but I have his qualification to, yes, to read. Be sure to stop me if I've gone over it because I've tried this three times and I'm going to be, turn it on. Okay. Speaking as Nick Aronson, in my two terms on the town council, I have found great satisfaction in helping guide residents to satisfactory solutions on everyday issues, including but not limited to garbage dumping, roadway concern, fallen and overgrown trees, neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. I've also shown initiative in starting a number of useful and forward-thinking programs. Our Communication Committee continues to look into innovative ways to better reach the community. My high school internship program has put over 200 of our younger residents to work on a multitude of community projects with the town council and many of our community partners, giving them their PUSD-required 40 hours of community service and often far beyond that number, as well as the invaluable and character-building experience of working for their local community. My Altadena Town Council survey team has created and distributed a meaningful and impactful outreach that provides loads of useful information on how we reach the community and what is on their minds. Unhoused Initiative Committee has produced a handout for residents and our Sheriff Department deputies to pass on to homeless all around us, giving them a listing of local resources in hopes of moving them safely off our streets. The new Neighbor Welcome Pack Program helps to warmly welcome those new to our town and guide them to resources and town assets, as well as maneuver their way through the county system to improve their new hometown. We have hand-delivered over 300 welcome packs since the program began. I sincerely believe we have positively increased the profile and awareness of the town council and improved our relationship with those who matter most to us, the residents of Altadena. Beyond my work as the Communication Committee Chair and as Vice Chair of the Executive Committee, I continue to find great fulfillment in exploring improvements within Town Council tract 4602. To have a better idea of what is of high concern and what shape our area is in, I have met with numerous local watch groups, frequently shifted my evening.
Nick just texted me and said that you can cut it for time.
Thank you.
He said he intended to send a shortened version and he didn't because he's out of town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Aronson.
Yes. And Nick is running unopposed. So for now, for 460301, let's have Armand Dashian, is that, is Armand here?
Oh, no, Armand.
Okay. Okay, no.
And he didn't provide a statement either?
No. No, I've got it. I've got it.
Oh, I've got it, okay.
Hang on. Okay, just a second here. This is 4603.01. Growing up at our tight-knit, beautiful community has shaped my values and dreams, instilling a deep sense of belonging and resilience. The support and connections I have experienced here has inspired me to take initiative and improve our community. I want to contribute to the growth and well-being of this town, fostering opportunities for our current residents and ensuring that others can enjoy the same sense of hope and possibility that I did. It's my way of honoring the community that raised me and making a positive impact for those who come after. As a duly licensed attorney and certified public accountant, I will bring a unique and valuable skill set to the town council. My background in accounting will ensure a strong understanding of budgeting, financial oversight, and resource allocation, which are all crucial for managing our town's finances effectively. This will enable the town to address more problems and concerns that residents may have with our limited available resources. As a lawyer, I possess critical analytical skills, a deep understanding of legal frameworks, and experience in navigating complex regulations, which are essential for crafting sound policies and ensuring compliance. My qualifications will promote transparency and accountability in governance, fostering trust within the community. My ability to bridge the gap between finance and law will enable me to address diverse issues from economic development to public policy, making me well-equipped to advance to the best interests of our residents. Thank you. And for, also for 460301, let's hear from Melissa Marona.
Sorry, I'm just going to, while you're walking over there, if anybody in the audience would like, or in the audience, would like to make a public comment, I'm going to remind you that the public comment cards are on the back. If you could just fill one out and drop it off on either side of the dais, please, for general public comment. Sorry, Melissa.
By all means, go right ahead. Madam Chair, fellow council members, Wolf, and those kind enough to listen, my name is Melissa Marona and I am running for the Census Tract 460301. I have lived in Altadena for over 20 years and in the beautiful Meadows neighborhood for the last 15 years. I am a wife, mother, and now a grandmother to the cutest one-year-old you've ever seen. For the past two years, I've had the privilege of serving on the Altadena Town Council. I have served as the Chair of the Legislative Committee, the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan Committee, Slate Committee, and also championed the upgrade of the electrical circuit in the Meadows. the Meadows, so power would continue to work in our neighborhood on very hot days. My career experience as an engineer for the past 20 years has given me experience with utilities, lobbying, and vast land use knowledge. All of this uniquely qualifies me for this role, which is great. But being a council member, I have found listening to people of your census tract is the most important thing I can do, listening to all the voices, every person that wants and needs to be heard, the neighbor that has a barking dog, or people who are having their mail stolen out of their mailboxes, or traffic issues, or that dreaded pothole. These are the really important things to people's everyday lives. I leave you with a story that touched me deeply, and if it's all I ever do as a town councilwoman, it will have been enough for me. An elderly woman called me who lives in my census tract. She was no longer able to roll her garbage cans back and forth to the curb. She was crying because she had tried to call the county and could not get through to the right person. I called both UWS and the county and was able to get her concern on record and her need for assistance. About a month later, she called me back again in tears. I was worried. But she was so grateful that her trash cans were now being rolled back and forth, back to the garbage can, and back and forth. All she said she wanted was to be heard, and I was just grateful I was able to do that for her. And that is what I would continue to do if I represented your census tract as your council member. Listen and do the best I can to have your voices be heard. Thank you for your time and for this opportunity.
And for 4603.02, to replace that guy over there. Yes, he's not running again. But Darlene, Darlene Green, you are up, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening, esteemed Chair and members of Altadena Town Council and community. My name is Darlene Green, and I'm honored to stand before you today as a candidate for 460302. I come to you with a strong commitment to our community, our schools, our businesses, with a vision for an even brighter, inclusive future. Having had the privilege to serve because of Councilman Chris on the Land Use Committee over the past year, working with Councilmember Chris and John, it has really deepened my understanding of the issues that we face for meaningful change in our community. This experience has not only given me valuable insights, but also fueled my passion for public service. I really enjoyed working on our census tract, getting to know the neighbors even more. I was also excited to have conversations with Councilman Member Nick, and this guy, a few times about the communication committees, and he did like my ideas. My background working with the homeless businesses, along with my legal training, I feel has equipped me with a unique skill set necessary to address our community's needs, and I'm excited about being a part of the solution. I believe that I can bring a skill set that brings collaborative ideas to the council. I look forward, and I'm passionate about serving our community, rolling my sleeves up, doing what I have to do. And while I haven't been in this role before, I'm excited about the future. Thank you so much.
In Census Tract, down to 4610, Isis Molden, who is, who is running to replace herself. She won a special election, and now she's running for a full term, and you'll be running unopposed.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I am running unopposed. My name is Isis Molden, and I'm running to represent 4610. I was elected in July, and now I'm up for the reelection. And in my past couple months, I've enjoyed receiving many of your emails. Many of my neighbors have had great ideas with open spaces, setting up boards, and I'd like to encourage 4610 that we do have a Neighborhood Watch meeting October 24 at 5:00 PM. And I really want to encourage, a few of the residents have come up and asked about starting a Neighborhood Watch program, and I really want to encourage you guys to attend the meeting, because we can combat issues like mobility, trash, dumping, homelessness, all the issues that you guys have emailed me about. And so I want to encourage you guys to step up and join a Neighborhood Watch. And my passion is advocating for our schools, advocating for neighborhood safety, and I'd like to continue the work. And so I encourage you to vote for me if you're able to for 4610.
And in 4611, we have Vi Stuart Gordon. Vi is also running unopposed. She won the special election a couple of months ago, and now she's running for a full term. Vi.
Hi, greetings and good evening. My name is Vi Stuart Gordon, and I'm in Census Tract 4611. And I was voted on by the Board May 2024. And I'm running for office again, because I believe in the power of our community, and I want to continue advocating for the needs and aspiration of our residents. And I believe together we can build on our progress and tackle the challenges ahead and create a brighter future for everyone. As a registered nurse and a community partner, I'm passionate about making a positive impact on Altadena. I have a genuine interest in public service and improving the lives of our residents. Through my experience in healthcare and community involvement, I have gained valuable skills and a perspective that I believe can contribute to the betterment of our town. Currently, I volunteer at Lifeline Church Community Service for their fold bank on the Fourth Wednesday of each month. I've also participated in the Greater L.A. Homeless Council for Altadena 2024. I've also, the short time that I have been appointed, I have attended a pizza with the cop, that was in September, the Honeybee Robotics. I also attended Assemblyperson Chris Holden's 25th Annual Resource Fair, the Altadena Concerts in the Park at Fonzwell Park, the L.A. County, when we have the Cannabis Management Community Meeting here, the Webster Community Pharmacy, official ribbon cutting, the Juneteenth Event, Pride Month Events, and lately, the latest is Rotary Club of Altadena Pancake Breakfast in June. So I have taken my responsibilities seriously as your Census Tract Councilperson. Also, I would like to see in Census Tract 4611, our Neighborhood Watch as well, that's something that I would like to start, and also for our Census Tract 4611, as well as other community events. Again, I would like to thank Alan Peck for encouraging me to run. He was a previous Census Tract representative, and I too would like to get 10 votes for the election. So again, thank you, and thank everyone, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
In Census Tract 4612, to replace Doug Cauliflower, who decided not to run again, I'm going to guess that Adam is out there. Adam, and I'm going to mess up your last name, so you're going to have to pronounce it yourself. Thank you very much. I would appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. I've watched this many times on YouTube, and so I feel like I'm around celebrities. Hi, my name is Adam Varvulis. I'm in Census Tract 4612. I live in Altadena. I also am a small business owner in Altadena. I have a place called Altadena Beverage and Market on Allen, not in my census tract. And my wife is also opening up a flower shop soon, two doors down. My wife and I have a son named Si who goes to Altadena Arts Magnet. And my wife Kate grew up not in Altadena, but on the other side of Washington in Pasadena, and is a multi-generational Pasadenaian, myself a native Angelino. Why I'm running is a good question, I think. I would like to be more involved, I think is a lot of it. And I know, like I said, I've been, I watch every single Town Council meeting on YouTube. I am heavily involved in our community as a small business owner. I meet and talk to neighbors and other citizens, I'd say, by the hundreds every week. I almost feel like I'm already a politician with how much stuff I hear from them, whether it's complaining and/or really excited things. And I feel like I can really help, as somebody who's also gone through the ABC, the health, the county, and have worked with those departments several times in Altadena, I have a personal experience with them, so I feel like I would have the ability to really, to help people with those things. Also, I find everyone in Altadena very interesting and lovely, and it's just, I want to be more involved in our community and get to know everybody and be a bigger part of my community. I think that's it. And am I running unopposed as well? Yeah?
Yes, you are.
So I also only need 10 votes. Thank you.
Looks like we may have a contest among certain people that are looking, that are only, only looking for 10 votes. See, you can, see, you can do much better than that. For, for Census Tract 4613, now I know Evan is here, because I already met him, and I also, you have to pronounce your last name, because I really don't get that one. And I'm sorry, you were not running unopposed, so.
No, I understand. No, I'm Evan Lavoy. It's kind of a French last name, so it's kind of...
Got it, got it.
I just want to say thank you to the Chair, as well as Vice Chair Wolf, and the rest of the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I also want to thank Pat Sutherland for her thorough application review and patience through the whole process. Last year, when I went to vote for the Town Council, I was a little bit shocked that there was only one person running, so I thought perhaps I should throw my hat in. So as a starting point, I think with two people on the ballot, I think we're doing pretty well in 4613 compared to last cycle. I think Diane and I actually come from a similar IT background in project management. I have an active PMP, Scrum Master Certification, and Scrum Product Owner. And my clients have included SoCal Edison, Stanley Black &amp; Decker, Meta Facebook, and SoCal Gas. Currently, I'm a part of the Power Management Team at GWP. And I think on the professional side, I can bring a strong drive to delivery for 4613 and a practical mindset to issue resolution. Our community is unincorporated, and the work that the council does is very important to the community. My wife Natalie and I love this community. We were married at St. Elizabeth's, and then we bought our first home a couple blocks east. And it's not too far away from Altadena Beverage. We love the beverage. We just wish everyone the best and hope to have a good turnout on Election Day. Thank you.
And also in 4613, we have Diane Marcusson.
Hi, I'm Diane Marcusson, and I am 4613, which I very fondly call Bahadina, because it's really in the down southeast part of Altadena and has a Pasadena address. I've lived there for 27 years. I've been on the Town Council for 14 years and on land use for that amount of time. One of the things that happens when you're on the Town Council for a long time is that you get to build relationships with the various county departments, and I have been happy to be able to do that. And I think that really has given my census tract and all of Altadena an advantage to being able to contact folks when we really need the help. I've made relationships with the Supervisor's Office, Regional Planning, Parks and Rec, and also the Fire Department and the L.A. County Sheriff. So one of the things that we can all do from the Town Council perspective is really keep contact with all those folks so that you know what's going on in your census tract. You can share that with them. We also all know that the state of California has decided to put new rules in for land use items and for low-income housing and for ADUs. And so although we can't control a lot of what they do, what we have been able to do that I've helped facilitate is to get, see if we can talk those developers into making the buildings be at least a little more user-friendly, community-friendly, which they're not required to do. So building those kinds of relationships and the ability to talk to those people, talk to the, all developers, talk to the residents that are doing land use projects. Land use is a really super-important thing that we do as a Town Council, and that we can help shape the community and become the pizza capital of the San Gabriel Valley, which has also been happening through land use. I look forward to helping continue to support my census tract and the community. I'm on the Board of Eaton Canyon Nature Center Associates and also on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. And so those connections also help me to get a broader view of the community, and I've also been able to set up more connectivity, if you will, between those, those community organizations and Town Council. So please vote for me. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Councilmembers, first of all, I would, I'd like to move to approve the slate of candidates as presented here.
Can we get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2024 slate of candidates as presented. All in favor? Anyone abstaining? And anyone opposed? That carries unanimously, so there is your slate of candidates for the 2024 Altadena Town Council election. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you all for staying so late. We typically, I'm not, I'm not going to go, we typically don't go on this long, and I promised them we'd be out by nine, and we're not. So we're going to move quickly along, and I'm going to turn it back over to Pat.
Very, very quickly. To the, to the candidates, the qualification statements that you sent in will be on the website tomorrow under the appropriate tab. Voting days are going to be on November the 5th, from noon to 6:00, in front of the Main Library on Mariposa. And on Saturday, November the 9th, will be from 10:00 to 4:00, again at the Main Library, at Prime Pizza, and at a, a place that we thought, we just made a small mistake, and we will verify tomorrow, so I just won't tell you where it is. It's on the west side of Altadena. And any questions of councilmembers at the moment?
Will you repeat the time for the 11:09 voting?
Sure, and I will also send this out to everyone. I'll just email it out to anyone. I'm sorry, on, on the 9th, 10:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for everything you've done. For this, go ahead.
And don't forget to pick up your signs that you left out in the community about election applications, and bring them back, so we have them for next election.
Hopefully, people brought some in today, I hope.
I brought mine.
Okay.
I took ours, too. Do, oh, do, got it. Okay, so there are, I did see some in the community, so if you, we'll grab them if you see them. Go ahead. Okay, thank you for that, and thank you to all of you for running. All right, we are moving on to general public comment, and in Nick's absence, Councilmember O'Malley will run public comment.
The wolf is too shy. During general public comment, any person may address the Altadena Town Council. The Altadena Town Council welcomes public participation and input. Comments are limited to a maximum of two minutes. The council does not respond to public comment during the time. If a response is desired, the comment will be given to the appropriate council member, provided you left your census tract on here. We have two public comments today. If you can both just... If you can both just come and stand up here so we don't have to wait. It's Ann Erhard and Alan Zorthian. Ann Erhard?
I have extra copies. I am sleepless in Altadena, a pun on sleepless in Seattle. And it's not my intention and it's a very weird situation that the neighbor would see fit to restain her exterior woodwork so frequently. This is an incredible, incredible problem. Like, who would want to do it that often? Well, we only have to think she's a photographer and has a very interesting quirk in her personality. The VOC level, she's using high gloss stain, the highest possible. I literally, I have MCS, multiple chemical sensitivity. I've had it since birth. My mother worked in a paper factory. I did nothing to do with it. I have the same allergy to cigarette smoke. I suffered in my young ages before. Smoking did not become so fashionable. So the VOC content is very dangerous, especially over years. She has been restaining it for two years. The first year was to find the right shade. I told you, she's a photographer, the right shade. She'd put it on, buzz it off, put it on. Now she's just having the tradespeople layer it on in high heat. The manufacturers do not recommend it being applied over 85 degrees. She's still doing it. I want a moratorium every two years, not more. You can't paint.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zorthian?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to speak about the northwest, the west, the West San Gabriel Valley area plan. I just want to reiterate, I'm opposed to this plan and I would call upon the Town Council to be opposed to it. There was this feeling that the, that the poly proposal was going to be prevented by approving the plan. I don't think it was going to do that and I don't think it will stop development in the foothills. It just, because a powerful entity can come in and change the zone. It doesn't matter whether you change it to A1, it just, it disempowers large landowners. And going over the, the, looking at the zoning changes that are happening within this suburban Altadena area, it is going to radically alter the character of Altadena, from what I can tell. There's H5 zones, H18 zones, H30 zones. This is 30 units on the corner of Altadena Drive and Lincoln. We're going to have huge apartments going up. You're talking about traffic deaths. You're going to be looking at a lot of increased traffic, increased danger to pedestrians. We need to put, really take a very strong look at this plan. It's going to radically alter Altadena. It's not just large property owners that are going to be affected, it's going to be everybody is going to be affected by this plan. And I don't, from what I can tell, a lot of people are not aware of what effect it's going to have on their neighborhoods and I encourage the Altadena Town Council to at least ask for a more thorough community engagement on this plan. Now, I, so that would conclude my statement. My neighbor, Chris, was unable to be here. Would I be able to read a statement from him?
I'm afraid we can't do that at this time. I'm sorry. If you want to email it to?
We've received it. I received it.
Okay.
Could you, could you read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is from Chris Romulot, I'm sorry. Romulotus?
Romul.
Got it. I have been taking a closer look at the West San Gabriel Valley area plan recently for its effects on my private property and my Census Track, which is in the northern Altadena area. After a detailed analysis, ironically, the passage of this plan will allow for LaVina-type development in high fire zone and already built-out areas. This will change the characteristics of the neighborhood, increase traffic, increase fire insurance, and negatively affect the environment. I do not believe that this is what we want as residents. These are the sad effects of a broken top-down approach to which ironically, we will give many of the opposite of what we want. This is just one example of how inconsistently the so-called goals have been applied here. I do not believe anyone is in favor of a top-down approach to planning our neighborhood, which we current, which we currently and which is in stark contrast with how we approached the planning last time. I truly believe we are all in favor of a more locally grass-led grassroots approach to this long-term zoning plan, where irreversible decisions like this can actually be debated, understood, and local voices and concerns could be heard in dramatic fashion instead of a top-down dictatorial one. I'm afraid the West San Gabriel Valley area plan is so dense and complex, we will not even have time to understand its effects. As residents, we will need to live within the effects of the West San Gabriel Valley area plan, long-term planning. It should be obvious, but this lack of outreach essentially done by the LA County Planning Department, many locals will remain completely oblivious here until, unless we do something else. Because of the lack of outreach, silence from residents should not mean support of this plan. But because we have allowed for this broken top-down process to take hold of our community's future, silence will eventually translate to support. As a community, we must act now.
Sorry, Councilmember, that's time.
Thank you.
I lost the script. Hold on, give me a sec. We have no additional comment cards. Councilmembers, recording Secretary Pat Sutherland will be handing you any cards pertaining to your Census Tracks that requested a response. Chair, I received no further correspondence prior to the meeting, so that is it for public comments.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we are going to move on and I'm going to ask for brevity of these Census Track reports so that we can exit the Community Center, 460301.
Yes, thank you. So I was going to be giving a report on the SCE Wapello 4KV Circuit, but we have not received information. The final phase will probably happen in early Octo, I'm sorry, early November. Stay tuned.
Thank you. And 4610.
Exciting news for Charles White Park Improvements. We're thrilled to announce that Charles White Park Improvements Project, the Board of Supervisors of Los Angeles County has adopted this project, adding significant momentum to the park's improvement. The project has been approved to adopt youth employment plan, establish and improve capital project, approve project scope and budget, approve appropriation adjustment, and the capital project number is 87801. The budget was approved for 3.576 million. It's an increase from 750,000 and I'd like to say a special thank you to the Board of Supervisors of Los Angeles County, the Regional Park and Open Space District Proposition A Excess Funds. And it was determined that the park will be categorically exempt from CEQA to ensure swift progress without significant environmental impact.
And that's going to be such a great thing to happen in Census Track 4610.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Are we good?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It, nobody's opposed. We need to take down the tables and the chairs that are here can just go out into the audience. That's it. Okay?
I just want to say happy birthday, Dani.
Happy birthday, Dani!
Happy birthday.
Yay! [applause][1287.94]